Hey, everyone. Welcome to the November ninth, 2023 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Hey, everyone. Thank you for coming. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Hetske.
Hetske here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Tiding.
Tiding's here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Weiser.
Weiser here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Gray here.
Okay, we have minutes of the October 12th meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them. And I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
All right. For those of you who don't often come to planning board meetings, our 6:30 to 7:00 PM time slot is typically work session time. So we go through tabled items and other business that we have between then and 7 o'clock when the public hearing starts. If we get through our items that are on the agenda prior to 7, we'll move immediately into the public hearing portion of the evening. So with that, Doug, do you want to go through our tabled items?
Yes. Tabled application number one, 1676 Penfield Road, the Arcade. At this time, we've received no new information. The applicant was at the October 19 zoning board meeting and has reached a determination. One of the things we did provide is correspondence from Andy Sevegas in the Building and Zoning Department, putting out a determination on the parking requirement based on the use on the property. They're still going to need a variance, but ultimately, the parking lot that is required is less.
Okay.
Since we have no new information, we're still waiting on them. No action is necessary.
Okay.
Tabled application number two, Chick-fil-A. We have reached out to their engineer for an update, status update where they're at. We have not heard back. So again, no new information, no new action is necessary.
Okay.
Tabled application number three, Webster Montessori School. So since our last meeting, we did receive the memo from our architectural consultants. The overall gist of his memo was that the proposed addition was largely compliant with the Pennsyl Design Guidelines and our Construction Design Guidelines. He did have some small recommendations. I believe the applicant was looking to put some of those in place, just like color choices and color balancing. On the site, we did receive revised plans. The engineering department is reviewing them. One of their most substantial comments was looking at the drainage. Given that the Montessori School was approved for a much larger addition previously back in 2011, and this addition that they're proposing is smaller in scale, we have determined that the design calculations they provided then are more than enough for what they're looking to do now. The fire marshal is still reviewing the sidewalk along the backside of the classrooms leading out from a couple of man doors on the back that do pass to the parking lot. But that is something that could be worked out if the board is comfortable with the project. To that end, we have drafted a part two and three EAF for your review.
Okay. Kelly, this is yours. Any concerns that you still have?
No, as long as we, you know, see the new layout according to the fire marshal's recommendations, we can get more estate.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have any issues with moving forward on? Yeah. Yeah, overall, Chris was, yeah. Bob, any concerns or anything? Okay. We do have draft approval resolution. We need to start with a secret form. So I don't know if we want to, Kelly, if you want to move to authorize me to sign the part two and three EAF forms?
Right, second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding, aye.
Okay. And then on to the approval resolution?
Just to prepare the, motion to prepare the approval resolution.
And approve it?
And approve it.
Tiding, second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken. Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
Okay. They have more classrooms.
Okay. Next item, we do have a couple of new business items. Start with the first one, 2755 2763 Penfield Road, the O'Leary subdivision. So this is coming back to us. So back in 2022, they approached us for a two lot subdivision. This is out on Penfield Road behind Ricolos Nursery. They have a substantial portion of land behind the nursery. Family on Furman Heights was looking to pick up some additional acreage. They did a two lot subdivision. As part of that two lot subdivision, Ricolos was looking to do a lot line shift and essentially move some of the nursery from that second property onto the first property and to cede a little bit of land to the neighbor. We, the planning board approved the subdivision back in 2022. They're looking to revise it. They don't want to do the lot line shift anymore, but the two lot subdivision will remain. At this point, it's essentially a lot line shift, so it just needs a simple vote for approval.
Okay. Engineering department good with this? Any comments from the rest of you up here? Seems like a simple. Okay. Somebody want to move to approve that?
Yep. I'll move to approve those changes.
Okay.
Tiding's second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
All right.
Our second new business item is Stafford Park. Rudy Newfeld would like to have an informal discussion with the board regarding a conceptual re-subdivision of Lot 10 in Phase Two of Stafford.
Okay.
He'd like we hold off on this until after the public hearing.
That, is this, what's the determination on this in terms of administrative versus a public hearing?
Stafford's determination was that since a new lot was.
You mean you want to have, you mean whether or not to have them come up and talk right now? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, should we, should we do this at this point or is this going to have to go to, can we, can we handle this?
Does the creation of a new lot require a public hearing?
I believe that, I believe in this situation, you do need to have a public hearing ultimately if you decide to go forward with that, with the re-subdivision. Our code provides a condition to avoid a public hearing on a re-subdivision if it ends up, what you're doing is reducing the number of lots. You have the option not to have one, but I don't believe that would apply here.
It's the same number of lots, essentially?
Well, in the end, you're also creating a new lot. You're taking an approved lot and splitting it into two. Anytime a new lot is created, I believe under the subdivision law, it requires a public hearing.
Let me at least think about this. Let's, why don't we go forward with the?
Public hearing.
Public hearing and I don't know if it's necessary to do the Stafford discussion twice tonight. And if we have to go to a public hearing anyway, I'm not sure that that is necessary to go through it two times.
I think initially, the informal discussion he's looking for is whether or not this would be something that is, that the board would even entertain since it does require the modification of a previously approved 278 subdivision.
Right. And from that standpoint, I certainly don't see a, I think there's a valid argument for that. The question is, do we go over that now or if we need to have it as a hearing anyway?
So it might be worth a discussion to see because if the board, like you, you know, is not supportive of having the applicant come in and ask for the resub, you could, you know, then they could decide not to spend the money to come in and do that. But, you know, so that would be why it would, might be worth the discussion. But ultimately, I do think if they want to come in, I think they need to have a public hearing. I don't see any way around that here.
Okay. I guess I'll ask opinions of the rest of the board. Should we get an idea right now? An overview? Bob, thoughts? 10 minute overview, five minute?
Yeah.
Terry?
If they had an option to, are they aware of the PRC comments or anything like that? If they had the opportunity to see the applicant?
We have not done. That was something we already did.
Yeah, so we got to, you know, I think we should give them an opportunity to take a look at them. Then, you know, they might know want to pursue it after looking at those comments. Now we won't have to go any further than that, I guess. So it's going to have to, I guess, get tabled at least for that. That and the public hearing or whatever you get. Not go that route.
Yeah. I think that the, that the application is certainly worthy of the board's consideration. You know, pending the outcome of a public hearing and a review by town staff, I'm generally in support of this re-subdivision.
Okay. So why don't we do a five, five minute overview right now of this to get an idea based on feedback? So if you guys want to come up and present, I'm not sure which, is it either one? Yeah, go ahead. Introduce yourselves and.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate the board's time with me this evening. This is Mike Bogueski. I know you know him well. I'll give a brief overview of how Stafford came about. When we first looked at the property, that, that back portion was, we didn't think it was wetland, but it was suspect. So we went through the process of delineating. It was indeed determined that it was not a wetland. It was an isolated, but we had to move forward with the project prior to getting that determination. So we, we had one less lot than we could have had approved at the original. But we wanted to go forward and it was literally another year before the determination came that it was not. One other small development, you, you had approved the 20 lots. If the wetland wasn't there, it would have been 21, but we were happy with 20. And then one of our customers built one house on two lots. So theoretically, right now, as Dita, there's 19 properties instead of 20. If we put one back where this wetland was, that is now not a wetland, the subdivision would still have 20 residents as it was originally approved. So we thought that was a reasonable request and certainly will defer to the board's thinking.
So in retrospect, essentially what you're saying is if you knew then what you know now would have originally come in for 21 lots.
21 lots would have met all the.
Conventional plan would have supported that and so on. And 20 were approved that it turned into 19. And you're asking to just go back to 20?
Correct.
Okay. This is something that we've been in some discussion about that based on the nature of what's being requested, it needs to go to a public hearing. So we thank you for your input on this. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Newfeld or Mr. Bogueski at the moment? Personally, I don't see a huge issue with it, but it definitely sounds like we need to go through the official step.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Do you want to move on to the, any other items on our agenda?
Nope. That's all I have on my work.
Okay, so we are 13 minutes, 12 minutes early getting started on our public hearing. So at this point in time, we will move directly into the public hearing portion of the evening. Again, for those of you who either haven't been to an event like this or a hearing like this, the way the process works is the applicant presents a project that they want to get approved to the planning board. The planning board members will ask questions and then we'll open it up to the audience and the public for public input. Part of the whole reason for having a public hearing is for public input. If you're here in the auditorium, great. At that point in time, you could raise your hand and I will, you know, ask you to come on up. Please come to one of those two chairs over to your right. State your name and address for the record and then address any comments that you have to the, to the board, not to the applicant. You can also, if you're not here, if you're one of the millions around the planet viewing our show tonight, you can call in. The phone number is 585-340-8771. And we have operator standing by to take your calls and put you in the queue. And you can also submit a comment electronically on the Penfield website, which is www.penfield.org. There should be a link to this meeting on the homepage and you're welcome to submit your comments that way. With that, also please, you know, as you always hear, silence any phones or electronic devices. Okay, Doug, let's read the first item.
All right. Application number one, EME Associates, Penn Lift Bridge Lane East, Airport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Crosstown Custom Homes of Rochester, Inc., request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 and Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval for the 23, for a 23 lot cluster subdivision with 22 semi-detached townhomes and associated site improvements on 14.55 acres located at 1345 Shoe Craft Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. The property is now or formerly owned by Crosstown Custom Homes of Rochester, Inc. and zoned residential, single-family residential, R120. Application number 23P-0011, SBL 094.03-1-45.
Okay, welcome. Have at it.
My name again is Rudy Newfeld. With me this evening is Mike Bogueski. I work with Crosstown Construction. I'll give a brief overview of the project to date. I know you're familiar with it and how it started. The property is going to be divided into two pieces, 22 townhomes. And then we've segregated a piece off after having discussions with the town board and staff here. We feel a much needed use for the community is senior living, of course. And we're planning at the next phase to have a concept approval for that too. So we'll talk about that later, but that will be subdivided into two. So the 22 townhomes will be, I'm sure some of you had a chance to drive by Barclay Park, our, our development on 250. We just sold, sold the last one. There's a little resident. We just sold the last one. Property turned out beautiful. So this will have a very similar feel. They will be for sale, not for rent. I know the rental market is strong and Pride Mark is doing very well with theirs in the Webster border. But this is a beautiful piece and we think that the for sale is, is a better use of this property. So there will be 22 townhomes for sale. We, we know that we're in a, in an EPod district. We have considered that carefully. We've had a tree analysis done, which we provided to the board and are waiting then for any further direction on how that should be handled. And if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them. And if not, I'll turn it over to Mike for technical details as far as the utility.
Okay. Mike, do you want to?
Sure, I can give some additional detail and summary on kind of how everything has been laid out and how utilities and stormwater works. Like Rudy mentioned, the concept stuff, the concept plans for this were reviewed back earlier in the year. And the layout itself was, was developed using clustering provisions. So there's 23 lots overall. Like Rudy said, that 23rd lot to the north along State Road will be reserved for future senior living development. And we have provided the sketch plan for that. The property itself was rezoned to R120 back in 2022, which basically created the, the lot standards that were, were going by for this. We've developed a lot standard using the clustering provisions with a minimum lot area of 11,000 square feet, minimum lot width of 64 feet, and we've reduced the front setbacks from the R120 down to 45 feet. And we're showing a minimum zero foot lot side setback, which allows for the duplexes, obviously, along the common lot line there. The roadways will be private HOA. So the development is planned for an HOA to be created. The remaining lands, basically, since it's a private road, it isn't a right of way. It's basically remaining lands for the roadway, the stormwater management facility located on the west side of the property, and the remaining strip of land that goes out to Plank Road to the south there. All that'll be owned and maintained by the HOA that allows for them to maintain the roadway, the bioretention facility and stormwater management pond and, and storm sewers, which is pretty similar to Rudy's other project, Barclay Park, that he mentioned. Basically functions kind of the same way. Utility wise, the sanitary sewer will get connected at Plank Road from the south and brought up to the north through the HOA lands and then extended to serve all the townhouses. That's basically the closest sanitary connection that works with grades to serve the property. There are additional sanitary sewers around on the other roadways, but that's grade wise and depth wise, that's what works to serve the property. Water main will get connected to existing water main along state and extend it along the roadway to serve the, the townhouses. And that'll be dedicated to Monroe County Water 30. Stormwater management and drainage. And as you can see, the, there's a proposed pond located at the western side of the property along with a proposed bioretention facility upstream of the pond. We're directing all of the drainage for the, this duplex, the townhouse development and the roadway to the bioretention area and the pond, both to provide the necessary water quality requirements and then the necessary water quantity requirements per the D C guidelines. And if you look at, I'll do a quick overview of how drainage works and in case anybody's wondering, the existing drainage of the property is kind of split. The majority of the drainage goes to where the pond is located, which forces the location of the pond for this portion, basically located at the lowest point of the property. Everything kind of drains to the right of way along State Road and then eventually to a culvert that, that crosses the road. There is a portion of the property along lot, where Lot 23 is located and the eastern, and an eastern portion that kind of splits and goes to the northeast to an existing rear yard culvert and section that picks up that drainage and then goes into the storm sewer system along Shoe Craft. Not quite feasible to, to provide stormwater management for this development there. But that's where future Lot 23's drainage will be directed. That's where it goes under current, current condition. We did get some PRC comments early in the summer and then we've provided some responses to those and then got a few additional PRC comments just recently last week, which we'll review with town staff. And then tonight, I believe a lot of it is to get some board input along with the public hearing and then answer any questions that we can for the board also, so.
Okay. Bob, do you want to start off?
Sure.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yep. Generally, on this site, could you describe? And I did read through the tree assessment, but your plans for tree preservation on that parcel specifically? I guess varieties that are more favorable and how you plan on integrating that into the development?
I'd be happy to. I've spent a lot of time in that, in that woods there, so I can tell you what it's like. I walked it myself with the gentleman from the state that did the assessment. I wouldn't call myself a tree expert. Tree lover, yes. Tree expert, no, but I, I'm very familiar with species. The majority of that woods is dead or dying ash trees, probably 85% of them. And then I don't know all those specific names. He, he listed them. So there's not a lot that's there. In going with the HOA and being able to use the 278, we were able to keep a 25 foot buffer around the edge of the property. I wouldn't say they're all hardwoods, but it's very well vegetated and it's green and it looks nice. So we'll be able to keep that. Within that buffer, there was some two or three large trees. A few of them are cottonwoods, which I would like to take down for my neighbors and the surrounding neighbors as well. The only trees that were of note. The only trees that were of note, if you look on down near, what's the, coming in from the, yeah, right, a little bit more, the first two buildings, yep, even further towards the road, yep, now come over a little bit west, yep, right about there, there's a stand of around twenty to twenty-five black locust tree. They are considered hardwood, probably not, wonderful for yards because they're a little bit messy, but they are hardwood. So for, for us, there's probably twenty-five trees there that I think are of note. The ash trees and the cottonwoods I'd like to take down, even if they are in the buffer, as long as everybody's okay with it, because they'll be a nuisance at some point. So I, I'm just waiting for the board's direction on those twenty-five trees, or if they want anything further of sidewalk, I'd be available for that. And then they really can't be preserved the way the thing lays out, so then I would wait for direction from this board on replacing them in a park, or I'm not exactly sure how the EPAD thing works, but we'll, we'll take direction from the board on how to best handle that for the trees we cannot preserve.
Okay. In the, in that twenty-five-foot buffer, do you envision supplementing what's already growing there as you maybe clean out that area and add to the vegetation in there?
No, not really. We plan to do it the way this, sometimes gradient doesn't allow it, and if water was going to my neighbors to the south, we would have to denude the entire property to get proper swales and that. But the way this is, everything is coming from my neighbors to me. So that twenty-five-foot buffer, there'll be, as soon as you put equipment in it, that, that vegetated row is gone. There'll be no, no equipment in there, that'll be caution taped off, and short of something that's dead or diseased, we don't go in there with any equipment. It stays green, provides a buffer for my new residences and for my neighbors. So it doesn't really need anything. You can't really put pines or that kind of thing in that vegetation. They won't be growing well. But the only place we do plan to enhance is across from, Mike, what are the last three there? Yeah, go to the roadway. That's fairly close to my three neighbors there, especially the one. So there, once we see the grades, if it allows for a small berm, we're, we're prepared to do that. And then I like very much the segment of fences and pine trees that I've been using. It, it works well and it provides a nice buffer. So in that area, we do plan to enhance that buffer.
Beyond the assessment, and I guess I'd need a little bit of help from staff here, but the feeling is that a tree survey would provide us more information on exactly what's there in, you know, more detail.
I don't know if this is the right time for that question, since I've never had to do that before. Would, would it make sense not to pay them for the dead or dying ash trees, or does the board want to see dead trees as well as live trees? I would just, I don't have to add that answer now, but some would need to provide us direction so we don't end up doing something that isn't necessary. But we'll be happy to do whatever we're asked.
Yeah, I would, I would think what looks like it's dead or dying, you know, could be identified as such, and then that's off the table.
Okay. More questions?
Nope.
I'm wondering, is there, with a forty-five-foot front setback, is there any potential leeway with that? So, and I'm just, this was just a thought. So I'd say as you come in on that road, if there's a slight little bend to the south, if that, let's say that went another, you know, ten feet to the south, and the homes to the west of the bend had a thirty-five-foot setback, could you provide more buffering for the northwest portion? And would that possibly work, or could it be looked into?
It's, it's something we could look into. It may help pull some of the grading down from that northern, that northwest, that, I think that area you're talking to, on the north side of the road, where there aren't any hose units, new units, that backs up to the houses along State there, the backyards there. It could potentially be able to bring that grading down a few feet. There, we do need to get in there to provide some storm sewers and drainage, just to make sure the drainage is working. And like Rudy said, there is potential to be able to plant some more trees along there to, for new trees. But if the board's okay with reducing some of the setbacks, that's a possibility of, either pulling some of the units closer to the road, or that allows the road to shift, yeah, a little bit. That's something we could look at.
I just want to make sure I understand the question. So you're saying maybe take that road and slide it another ten feet to the south?
Yeah, even just the west, or the portion that's west of the?
The bend.
The bend.
That would be doable. We've left about twenty-five, I don't know if we have a scale with us, but what's the scale, Mike, from my typical house to my buffer? I'd like, in pushing them back, if we lose buffer, I prefer not to do that, but what do we have behind my house into the buffer? I remember like forty-five or fifty feet, because we also have a pipe, a drainage pipe in there, too.
Correct.
But how much room do we have?
It's about that.
Forty feet?
Yeah.
So if we were to take the unit back five feet, still have enough room for drainage and the pipe, and reduce the setback by five, that would accomplish our ten-foot kickover. So yeah, that's, that's very doable.
Yeah, I guess I'm not even, I don't, I don't even know if you'd need, would you need to move the units five feet, or just reduce the front setback?
Yeah, the only way to move the road and not move the units, it would be to reduce the setback.
Right.
Yeah.
But if you reduce it ten feet, it's still doable, but it makes a really short driveway then, when you go that tight, because you have the right-of-way, utility boxes, then the front yard of the residence becomes really short. You can't quite get two full cars in, so.
Correct.
Splitting it would be, I think, a good compromise, and I'd still have enough room to not touch the buffer, still have enough room to get my pipe in, so five and five would work, but we'd consider whatever the board prefers. That would help us with ten feet on the, the buffering on the north.
Just thinking about how to, you know, accomplish some additional?
I, I like it.
Screening and buffering. Okay. Other folks on the board, questions?
I just have a question about the townhomes in general. Are they two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
They're two and three-bedroom. I guess they're calling them two-bedroom with a den is how most people are, are setting them up, but we are very custom. I know some builders, you, you can pick the five things that they do. These would be very custom homes. People can take the inside of them and really do it to their taste. We've designed about eight or ten changes that are already pre-designed that they could pick. But what we found at Barclay is a number of the residents are spending, A, a great deal of money and being able to customize literally anything they want. So the outside is set and the facade, but inside, it's really their, theirs to finish any way they like.
Do you have any elevations architectural?
I probably can get one from, from Barclay. We don't have these finished yet, but we could, would you like me to find a Barclay one? I probably can get it emailed right over to you. Eric, do you have?
Sure.
One of the Barclay?
We may be able, we may be able to pull it up, because we, we should have it in our projects, or we could go to Google Maps, something like that.
You might have it already. I don't remember.
I, I know we have it, I know we have it somewhere from Mac to Projects years ago from when it was approved.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to really reiterate what, what Bob was alluding to. Without the Woodland EPAD report accompanied by the pre-survey, I don't think the board or the public can really get a, a full sense of how much vegetation is there and how much of it is just dead wood that, that will need to come out and get cleaned up anyhow and what's, what's left. So that, I think that's a really, particularly in the areas that A J's talking about, where he's trying to get to a point where we're increasing a buffer between existing properties and the new development. Being able to see the actual survey and understand in the Woodland EPAD report exactly what you tend to do with that, how you tend to comply with that section of town code, I think that's going to kind of complete the puzzle. Understood.
Fun. Yeah, and I guess one question I have is, is there any wiggle room in the design that can help maintain trees? I know in other developments, you've actually been pretty good about not taking down trees. You know, there's developments that I've seen you've done in Penfield that have matured trees right from the beginning that other builders will go through and just tear them out. So I'm wondering what can be done in this area to help along those lines?
We, we've looked at it very carefully, because, as you know, with my, I, I love the developments, the sense of arrival's important to me. I spend far more money than anyone demands or has to, because I want it to look right. I wouldn't say it's not a, a beautiful woods, because it is green, a lot of it is dead or dying. So if I was to go in and take everything that's ash trees, that's dead or dying, and some of the invasive species that were mentioned in that report, there wouldn't be a lot of valuable trees left. The only ones of value are where basically two of the townhouses would go, so we'd have to eliminate them, which that, that would just isn't an option. So if we could move things around, or there was more property, we would be happy to do that, but there's, there's no really, to me, trees of note here that are worth trying to work around to make the project still feasible. But we're very well aware that once the board does a survey and whatever the determination is, then we'll either, and, and on our own projects, the town tree study is there, or you have to put two per lot, I think, and we've always far exceeded that by quite a number, just based on us wanting to look good. So I think once you get the report, if there was a way I could design and build around it, I'd be very happy to do that, but this project doesn't allow that. So we'll have to take whatever the regulations are. If we can't preserve those twenty-five or twenty-six black walnut trees or black locusts, then we'll ask for the board's direction on how we should handle that, or where we should replant them.
Okay. I mean, you?
No, no.
Yeah, other question?
Yeah, I just got one about the road through there. I've been in Barclay many times, very nice. Now, is that approximately the same size road as you have in Barclay?
Yeah, it's a private drive, twenty-foot, twenty-foot private drive, owned and maintained by the HOA, and that's worked very well. Neighbors have been great, never had any issues. Sometimes we've had a question from different boards. We, we provide this twenty-five-foot buffer and what, what predicates that the smiths don't come in one night and just cut it all down? We just haven't had that issue. The board's pretty strong, the HOA has pretty tight regulations, well-worded, and we've just never had a problem.
You can hear sidewalks or lighting?
No sidewalks, and instead of lighting, looks a little commercial to me on a small project like this, what we do is we provide a post lamp for each resident, but it's, I don't remember the lumens, but they're really strong post lamps, three lamps, and it lights up the road well and looks so much more residential than a, a street light, I mean. And we provide that, so it's uniform, it all looks the same, they're installed right.
Do you have signage in front for the entrance way?
Yep. The entrance to this is different. Like, if you look at the entrance to, it's Barclay Park, matured a lot now, and they, they have a little park area. We don't have the room there. The entrance to the thing is sixty feet wide, so it, it is wooded, some of that's going to go, we're going to preserve as much as we can. So to me, the entrance here will be more, I'm going to use the word understated, so there'll be some light plantings, a small, a small monument sign that will be lit, but there's just not room to do something extensive, and it feels very, not rural, but it, it's just a nice quiet entrance, so it'll be an understated entrance that's well-maintained. And then I did have discussion with my neighbors, I, I forgot their name, right directly across from the road, yep, right there, and, you know, there'll be some lights coming out in the evenings. I have not had a chance to meet with them yet, but we're very agreeable to whether that's a small berm or some trees, something that mitigates the lighting for them, and we haven't gotten to that discussion yet, but I've already volunteered to have that and take care of something reasonable so that they're not looking at those lights in the evening.
And apparently, you guys put the, the fountain in? Like, I know some of your projects do have to circulate the waters there.
Haven't thought about that. I'd leave that to an HOA thing. Like, in, in Barclay, I did it. Then some people said, oh, we don't want to pay for it, so I leave that in, in the regulations, that it's an option. We will, when we build it, we'll, we'll pipe it, so there's not an issue, and then the residents have to make the choice, yes, we'd like one, we're willing to all pay for it, and then we'll put it in. Then they have a say in whether they want that, how big it should be, should it be lit at night? So I stay out of that, so that there's not an issue with some residents complaining. They've all got to meet, vote, and then we'll take care of it.
I can touch on the entrance a little bit, too. Beyond what Rudy mentioned, the, the one benefit of having the water and the sewer connect down the west is there really isn't any larger utility mains that need to go on both sides of the road, so it really lets the, the disturbance for installing the road and grading along the road keeps it pretty minimal. It is a sixty-foot right-of-way there going out to Shoe Craft, but the proposed road is, is follows existing grades pretty closely, which kind of keeps that, that disturbance and that grading for the roadway down, down quite a bit, versus having to basically clear the whole sixty-foot just to get water and sanitary and storm sewers through there.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
All right. At this point, I'd like to open it up for public participation. Once again, I will, if you're not here and you'd like to call in, you can call in at five eight five three four zero eight seven seven one. Alternatively, you may submit a comment electronically on the Penfield website, W W W dot Penfield dot O R G, and there should be a link to this meeting on the homepage. There's also, we have small slips of paper up at the front, if you would like to fill one out, if you'd like to speak. I'll go through these first, and then if anyone else has questions, just raise your hand after that point. And once again, once I call your name, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Feel free to sit down at one of the two chairs and peek into the microphone so everyone here and, again, around the planet. You know, just, I say that, but we have nine hundred and twenty thousand views on YouTube, Penfield does, so that, I mean, that blows me away. I'm sure eight hundred and eighty thousand are planning for it. Okay. Also, please forgive me if I butcher your name. Okay, first person, is it Aaron Roy? Line up.
So, I'm Aaron Roy, twelve sixteen Shoe Craft. So I wanted to thank you all for giving me the opportunity, and I agree with the comments of A J about how great of a job you do to allow this kind of civic engagement, so I appreciate that. So I have a couple of concerns and criticisms, criticisms of this plan, so I've got them down to the three, for brevity. So my first criticism is in, is in regards to the clustered So my first criticism is in regards to the cluster development lot count. So clustering, you know, 278, it allows you to cluster subdivision to allow for the preservation of natural and scenic qualities of open lands. But it has to be done density-neutral. So I think there's some conflation between lots and units with this development. So 278, I'm referencing this guide that's put out by New York State Department of Local Government Services, entitled Subdivision Review. It goes through some details of 278, the application, you know, some demonstration of different developments that can be done with it. So it says, "Under the statutory provision, regardless of the form, a cluster development may take multifamily, townhouse, single-family homes, smaller lots, or other non-residential building clusters, the maximum number of units allowed on the parcel may be no greater than that which would be allowed under a conventional subdivision layout."
Right.
So they submitted a 23 or 22-lot conventional plan, I believe, but now we have here 14.5 acres allowing a density of 22 to 23 units, whatever one you're going by. And now we have an application with 22 townhouses. We have a subsequent application with a senior apartment or senior living facility with 10 to 20 units. So we end up with a density of 32 to 42 units on this parcel, when by the R120 zoning, you're only allowed to have, you know, 22 to 23. So I don't, I didn't, haven't heard that being addressed, but I think it's a major criticism for this plan.
And that's, that's a good point that you bring up. And there's two differences between the two items on the agenda tonight. This one is an actual preliminary final. The second one is a sketch plan. And those are valid questions that you're asking that we also are asking.
Okay. Sounds good. So I wanted to bring that up. So going to my next criticism, so looking back at 278, the letter of the law allows a developer to cluster in order to preserve the natural and scenic qualities of open lands. So we have here a woodland, but we have a cluster development, but I don't see much effort being done to preserve natural or scenic qualities of our open lands. There's a proposal, it looks like it has some HOA lands, which they've explained and outlined here. I think it's on the 14 and a half acres, there's four acres of HOA. Those include stormwater management facility and the road, neither of which, to me, seem natural or scenic. So I think that however this development goes, I think there needs to be more effort put on to preserving open space. We don't have a lot of woodlands left in this town, certainly not on this side of the town. This woodland seems to have been here for a long time, at least decades. I'd like to see some of it preserved. I think that the minimum the town could do would be to require that, you know, going, I appreciate the questions about the EPod code. I think the minimum the town could do would be to require that an EPod exists at the end of this, which an EPod, the minimum size is five acres. You know, this proposal seems, and the subsequent, essentially removes the EPod entirely. So I just don't think that's appropriate. So it sounds like everybody had reviewed the EPod code because I think the questions and concerns that were brought up seem consistent with that. So I don't have much else to say as far as the EPod goes. I think a tree survey, I've driven by it, I mean, a lot of times, so I've, and I'm very familiar with Emerald Ash Bore, ash trees in general. I haven't, I personally haven't seen that significant number of dead or dying ash trees on that property, but I would leave that up to an official survey. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Next person, Elaine Meadows.
Hi, I'm Elaine Meadows, and I live at 1348 Shoe Craft Road. My husband and I own the property that the street dumps right out into. The proposed street.
Across the street?
Across the street.
Okay.
My concerns primarily stem around that street. I'm very concerned about the bottlenecking of the residents' traffic and their impact on myself and the two neighbors, the one who lives to the north of the street and the one who lives to the south of the entrance. We talked about EPod quite a bit tonight, but really, some mention has been made of the buffering that's going to be along that street, but there's no dimension given for how much buffering and how much green space is going to be added back in alongside of the road. I bring this up because when we had our informal discussion months and months ago, a woman at 1379 Shoe Craft spoke about how the Crown Point developer told her there would be all kinds of buffering between her property and the new sub-development, and she got nothing. And so I think that it would be good to see in the plan, what, how large is the buffer that is being, that is being proposed to put in between such a road and the neighbors? And along those lines are the practical aspects. It's a, you know, it's different from the preliminary plan that we saw months ago, but now it's a very, very straight road, and I don't see where the mailboxes are going to be. So as the person whose driveway is right at the end of that, I'm very concerned with 23 residents stopping to get their mail every day, and you know they all pull over on the wrong side and the mess that makes, and I'd like to see on the plan where are those kinds of things going to be for the residents. And then lastly, I had just some comments on the report that was posted to the website. Obviously, I'm still very disappointed that the main access for all of these homes is going to be right there on Shoe Craft Road. The three most closely affected properties have been there for decades, as the previous gentleman mentioned. The oldest one has been there 173 years, and now we're essentially going to be corner lots at an intersection. Looking at the sketch plan, it seems to me that the space on State Road between lots 927 and 933 in the middle of the block is much wider area for a driveway than that proposed at 1345 Shoe Craft. And I don't understand why the buildings can't be slightly rearranged to allow passage out that way and still preserve the developers' preferred number of units. And then specifically regarding the responses to the planning board's sketch plan, paragraph one, Roman numeral two, "Road entrance onto state or plank would require the road to be constructed at an existing low point, which would create drainage and stormwater management layout conflicts." But we heard earlier in this meeting that the drainage is going to go to the pond on the west and then, you know, over to the east. There is no drainage issue coming out in the middle of the property over there. We also talked about how, oh, and the response further goes on to say, "Entrance onto Shoe Craft Road places the proposed road farthest from any existing intersections onto state or plank." If you look, you know, there's no scale drawn, but if you use your fingers, I'm assuming it's drawn to scale, clearly the distance between that centerpiece and each intersection is much greater than the distance from the proposed entrance to the plank and Shoe Craft "The proposed entrance onto Shoe Craft reduces overall clearing required for the development footprint." Most of the neighbors who were worried about the clearing, you know, irrespective of the EPod discussion, are mostly concerned about the buffering between all of these new properties and their own. We understand the ash trees are dead. I've got 21 dead ones that we've taken down on my own property. But we're all concerned about the lights and the clearing and replacing woodland with pesticide lawns. And then finally, my last point is the statement, "Shoe Craft Road is a town road and will not require any additional permitting." And I guess for this one, I just have to be a little wry and say, thank you for this blatant honesty. But this is a disappointing, a deeply disappointing reason to put a road here, and it's actually almost offensive to those of us who are going to be living permanently with this change. I'm sure this proposal will provide beautiful housing when it is done for all of the people who are within that private enclave, and it will make life much more convenient for building and developing. But this project will fundamentally and permanently change property values and characteristics of existing properties that surround that entrance. It's my front yard, and I'm going to have to live with all the effects of a road for delivery trucks, landscaping vehicles, garbage trucks, the school bus parents, and all the snowplows pushing their snow across the road into my driveway forever. And I just, you know, I'm just very concerned about the management of that narrow roadway. And thank you.
Thank you. Pauline Novick?
I live at 933 State Row, which is the piece right next to where she wants to bring the road.
Okay.
Just for the record.
So you're the, sort of a wedge-shaped lot just to the west?
Pardon me?
This is a square lot.
Okay. Okay. The square with the being circled?
That's my square that you're being highlighting now.
Oh, yeah.
I have over an acre there, and I am, did get it divided or rezoned. I have to still come in yet to you folks to get it actually technically divided so I can sell the half acre. My house is at the east end of, and when we bought the extra piece, it was an investment at the time, and it was also to provide us more privacy. I have aged there and plan to continue to do so, so, but at this point, I don't need that much privacy, I guess. And I do plan to sell it once I can get it divided. I've been in and out of the hospital four times since May and have not had that as the highest priority
Sure.
in my life. I do have a number of concerns and comments to make about some of these things that have been discussed already. He had told us when he came to meet me with me before it even came to you folks, that they were going to try to provide a buffer to the existing homes. And I don't see that on any of the maps. I was, did request the site plan. I don't see any provision for buffering from the new to the old. And it is a very wooded area. Right now, I can see some of the houses on Shoe Craft and Plank Road from my house. In the winter, I, and then it's the winter, in the summer, I can't see any of that. So we have a wonderful amount of trees that are there. I don't care what kind they are, but they are leafed out and they do provide a great deal of privacy and visual presence. I know the problem about the ashes. I've had to have a number of them removed from my property. So I can understand that they aren't all good trees, but they are trees that do provide a wonderful separation for the neighborhood. This whole project, to me, seems like it's going to be a total change of character of our neighborhood. I've been there since 1965. It largely, it's, it still is a farm area. We have shoots, we have bowmans, we have the man across the street from me who has garlic, acres and acres of garlic, and he's preserved a lot of the natural beauty around us, too. So this is a change totally of the character of the neighborhood. And I don't know that that is necessarily progress. The staging area is, that he has provided now, is only about maybe 20 feet from my side lot. And a lot of trees and a lot of gravel and a lot of equipment has been sitting there all summer. And a lot, it's been, when I see the provisions for the next property, the other piece that is coming in the second hearing here, it looks like it's going to be practically in my side yard. There's not going to be that much of a buffer at all if he's trying to make it providing a pleasant atmosphere. I guess I had always wondered whether that piece that Elaine wants, thinks would be better for an entrance, that's in the middle of a street where people are already going much over the speed limit most of the time. And to have another road come in, I don't know, yes, it is a longer distance between the intersecting roads at the end, but it still seems like it's not going to be a very practical way to do an entrance to that property. I'm concerned also about the, you're talking, you talked quite a bit about the setbacks of the townhouses and the amount that are put in and the amount of area that they're recovering. I think most of the free space that's going to be left is what is now all undeveloped, and it's not in with what is being developed, to be developed at this point in time. So that's where he's getting the save the greenery kind of thing. So, and I've spoken before, and I still can't bear to drive down Barclay Square. It seems to me that if you've got setback arrangement requirements, that they ought to be uniform. And here we're talking about making them shorter than what is even allowed for single-family homes. So that's a concern. I just come away from Barclay Square in tears. Everything is so close together, everything is so close to the road. It just seems like it, we're being put in the middle of a city, which is why we moved to where we did move, to be away from being in the middle of a city.
Sure.
So, as I say, I've been there a long time. I had expected that it would be developed at some point in time, but this is not how I thought or expected that the town would provide for us.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. To address the setback idea that I had, you have, you make, it's an arguable point. My thought was, is there a way for us to get less disturbance overall so that there's a bigger buffer for the neighbors by doing so? So that's, part of that is why we have...
So they have, they'll have bigger backyards is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially, yes.
And my house does not meet the current requirements as far as setback is concerned either. So I understand at that point and I have a lovely big backyard.
Yeah, I mean, I live
And I can understand.
Yeah, and
But it seems like that when the townhouses, the houses are close, the two buildings, the buildings in each lot are close together. And they're close to the road. So it just seems like it's going into the inner city.
Yeah, part of my, I live on a corner lot in a half acre subdivision. And my, you know, I have a front setback and a side setback and a huge front lawn and really no backyard. And I've lived there for 30 years and it's been fine, but the front yard is kind of unusable. It's kind of unusable and it'd be nicer to have a bigger, in my opinion, for me, I'd rather have a bigger backyard than a front yard. But that's, again, it's, everybody, everybody thinks differently, so.
Well, the one, my house does not meet the current setbacks because it was built before there were those rules.
Right.
And I don't leave my front door open in the summer because the traffic noise is so bad that I cannot hear the TV. So I have, there are pros and cons on that certainly.
Right, right.
But that's the least of the problems, I think, as far as this project is concerned.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, would anyone else in the audience like to speak? And we appreciate all the generations that come out very much. Most younger people, especially that young, don't like to come to planning board hearings. Let's see if we have any calls. Okay, we currently have no.
They have nothing down.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Nothing else from the audience on this application? Okay. Thank you for your presentation. We'll call this hearing close and move on to our second item.
All right. Application two. BME Associates, Ten Left Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, one four four five oh. On behalf of Crosstown Custom Homes of Rochester, Inc., requests an informal discussion before the board with a concept for proposed 16,000 square foot residential greenhouse senior living facility with associated improvements on 3.78 acres located at 1345 Shoe Craft Road, Penfield, New York, one four five two six. The properties now are formerly owned by Crosstown Custom Homes of Rochester, Inc. and zoned rural residential, or single-family residential R120. Application number 23P dash zero zero one two, SBL zero nine four dot zero three dash one dash four five.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Do I have to reintroduce myself again?
Probably, yeah, yeah.
My name is Rudy Neufeld. I'm here this evening with Mr. Mike Bobczeski from BME Engineers. I work with Crosstown Construction and I'll give a brief overview of, of how this came about. When we first looked at the property, we knew it needed to be rezoned. Speaking with Mr. Costello on what the possibilities were, he mentioned that the town board was looking to rezone it. So we entertained it, put together a few ideas of what we'd like to see here. And I had the idea that maybe a piece of this might be good for some kind of a senior something. Didn't really know what it should be. Well, the, the town board very much liked it. They loved the idea. Could be expanded as reasonably large as the code would allow. So we went back and played with the ideas and I have gotten some tremendous feedback. What I liked about it, often senior living places are where it's less expensive. So you're in a field or you're in a busy road. This is a beautiful little spot and I like the idea. I can't say that I'm possibly designing it so that I have a good place to go at some point, but who knows? That may happen in the future. So that's how that idea came up and we've been, haven't really gone to any agencies. There's a number interested, but we wanted to get the concept approval so we knew a rough idea of what we were looking at. And then we're going to talk to staff and the town and agencies and figure out what is the most needed venue for seniors in the town? And then we'll manipulate that, once we have that input, to put what we think is the best use for this property and for the future seniors resident.
Okay.
A few technical details, Mike, maybe talk to a little about the storm drainage. And then any questions for either one of us, we'll be happy to answer.
Yeah, as far as the, the site layout and then how the, the, kind of the engineering and drainage stuff is, is laid out or the conceptual plan is, utilities are fairly straightforward. If there was a, a single building there, the, the services would just get extended to the mains that are along the road. Sanitary and water services, stormwater, like I had mentioned, for the, for the, with the previous discussion was, drainage from this lot basically flows to an existing end section at the southeast corner there. So this is just conceptual, but we've reserved basically an area at the low point of the property for a future stormwater management facility. And there would be some type of green infrastructure that would have to get designed during a final design of this, of this site, this lot, to meet all the, all the state's stormwater regulations. Everything's been, been located on that eastern half of the, of this lot. This lot 23 is 3.7 acres. And just conceptually, we've left everything to the eastern half. That western half just remains undisturbed. And it would just be a single, the, the building. As Rudy mentioned, it's, it's a conceptual building just modeled after other existing senior living types of the greenhouse type of, of senior living facility, which just has a single driveway entrance. It's a, it looks like a residential home, single-story type of, type of building. So site improvements are pretty minimal beyond, beyond kind of what's shown. So if there's any questions, I can help answer that and then Rudy can elaborate on any, anything else also.
Okay, so a couple of questions regarding the, I don't even know if I want to say proposed structure, but the the gray shape potential structure that you have on the plan. What was that modeled, I'm, I'm assuming that you took that from some other project somewhere else and plotted down onto this flat?
It's modeled after the, the St. John's greenhouse buildings that are existing in, in Penfield currently.
Okay. Typically, how many, what's the nature of that? How many residents? Let's say on this one, at 16, this is 16,000 feet. How many residents would that accommodate?
So the ones you guys are bringing up on the screen, I believe those buildings were eight to 10 bedrooms. They're not
The Arbor Ridge?
Yeah, they're not necessarily units. They're basically just, it's what the, the intent Rudy has been describing was a type of senior living facility that's not separate apartments or units. It's basically a number of bedrooms with a communal living space, communal great room, living, the
Like a big house with a bunch of bedrooms?
Yeah.
Okay, in this case, a 16,000 foot house, big house with a bunch of beds?
It's bedrooms, basically, yeah, with, with a large common area for everybody to use.
I did have a chance to spend a little time there. Of course, I don't know if it's just me, but as soon as you say, senior anything or nursing home, I don't like it.
It depicts a certain
I don't like it. I, I, I took my, of course, I never put my mom there and I'm going to visit one. So I took her to visit and horrible for us. You're not coming here. You wanted to visit, see what it was like. So to me, this did not feel anything like just a bad place to be. It felt like a big home. There was folks in the living room. There was a fireplace, a group kitchen. And these were not people that needed medical attention. That's a whole nother different level. But it was basically a tiny little apartment to live in a group where people were still healthy, had a tiny little patio. And I just, I thought that if I ever did one, that's where I, I'd be happy putting people. So that's where the concept came from, discussed it with the town board. And I don't know that that'll be the, the final thing. I, I still would like a lot of input so we can bring the best thing to the town that we can. But that's what I'd like to see there.
Okay.
So how'd you come up with 16,000 square feet based on that building?
It's what the code allowed that would fit on that piece.
By the code?
Yeah.
16,000 square feet will fit on that?
What would fit on that for a
No variances or anything?
Nope.
And eight to 10 people?
I don't know that that's the number. I, I'm not familiar enough with it to say.
I think the, the, the buildings that you had shown, I think each one of those buildings is eight to 10. I'm not positive, but it's around there.
Okay.
And, and if, if we got into this and an agency that will, I'm not going to manage this thing, will build it and, and lease it. If they said, there's really a need for two kinds of buildings. One for somebody that doesn't need any care at all. And whether it's a memory care or another level of service that seniors really need, we would entertain that with the board's direction. So could it be two buildings? I don't know yet. But, but we have enough space to put what we think is going to be the very best thing for future residents and for the town. But we're flexible still to, to see how this should be. This just gave us a direction on what, what code would allow for me to go out and start to get educated on what the healthcare providers really would like to see here.
Okay. I mean, I know that Penfield is low on senior living options. Has been for a number of years, so. Question I have about drainage. Currently it drains to the southeast corner?
Correct.
And so is there some sort of, well, I think from the first application, the, the property to the south, the eastern portion of that drains to that southeast corner as well?
Yeah, there, and
And
there's basically an existing end, like end of pipe end section that comes between the two houses there that collects runoff from this lot. There's like an existing swale along that eastern property line that kind of drains to the south. A portion of
Along Shoe Craft? Or no, in between?
Away from, south from state, south from state towards that end section.
Okay.
Along the eastern property line of lot 23.
I see, okay.
Yep. And then there's a portion of the, where lot 18 to lot 22 of the lots below kind of drains that way. The, with the final design of the lots of the south, we have looked at providing a storm sewer and some inlets in those rear yards along that, the, kind of the divide between lot 23 and the, the backyards there to make sure we're picking up any runoff from those backyards and tying it in and directing it towards that existing storm sewer also. And then obviously we haven't final designed any kind of pond or, or green infrastructure facilities. But with the concept layout, that's, it made sense to at least allocate some area that that's where it would end up going, since everything is, is going that way currently.
Okay. Okay.
I thought, I just got thrown out. Okay, I'm just looking at the size of the building there. I think maybe eight to 10. I know it's just throwing numbers off the backboard. So eight to 10 people, you know, I haven't been to Arbor Ridge or that other one in a long time. But, you know, if you got two people living and they're still old enough to drive, they're all driving, have cars. And I don't know how the, they have employees there, you know, they cook for them. So, you know, you got what you spots you're showing there. But I mean, the building's so big, there's not a lot of room from what I can see. And even if you try to figure the road, you know, the buffering in between those other people's homes and stuff. So we've got to really keep an eye on that, I think. I know you see 16,000 is
Can, can you go back to show the Arbor Ridge area also to see cars and parking there?
Yeah, there really isn't a big parking need, based on that one as an example, so to speak. There really isn't a lot of parking need.
They don't drive?
Yeah.
That one's considered, that one's considered as skilled nursing.
Yeah.
But it's, it's sort of in between like skilled nursing and a group home. So they do have shuttle vans that they keep in the garages. But from my understanding for those ones, most of the rest
The website for the Penfield Green Homes is, it does reflect that it's a skilled nursing facility. So they would require care and they would, you know, probably have employees, I would think.
Okay.
This isn't going to have garages?
We didn't get to that level of design. We, our, our goal was to see what, what would fit. And then once we have that decided, yes, we can have so many units or, or so many beds. And we figure out what we want to do. We know we're going to modify this based on the board and the code. We just wanted to get a starting point to go and start to market this and say, what, what do people really want? And I'm sure that's going to be a number of meetings and discussions to get what we think the seniors need and, and what makes sense to the board. So that, this was just a concept so I could get started.
Look forward to it.
Me too.
Bob, any questions?
No.
Okay. Kelly?
I don't have any now. I do want to see, so it's going on it, what, what it's going to actually look like for it to take out. Because it's so hard to, for me to put my, even with looking at the other places, it's hard for me to wrap my brain around it right now just by looking at this gray box.
As soon as we get direction, if the concept is at least what, what the board likes, then we'll go to work on getting ideas, information, real stuff. And then we'll get some sketches together, get the staff's input. And then we'll be able to make a presentation that somebody can really visualize.
Yeah, is the, so when you put the, when you just placed it onto the layout here, did you play with the layout of it at all? Like flip, flip it in different areas of the, because I feel like it's so close to
We actually had three layouts when we, we decided how to do this. One was with two buildings. In fact, I think there was even three, a tiny one over on that corner and then two smaller ones. So this, I don't know, I don't remember. Staff got involved, but this seemed to be the most condensed. But that doesn't, we're not cemented to this layout at all. It's just a starting point to figure out where we want to be and get input from everybody and, and then come back with something. We just needed the board's approval on a concept that the ideas are good. It fits, that's about the size we're going to use. And then we're, we're very open to create what we and the board and the town thinks is the very best thing for this people.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm hearing that this is fluid, which is fine. But I'm also hearing that you have not had any conversations with an operator. of the senior living facility or an enriched or, uh, licensed care facility. So, you know, I, there's a really big distinction here. Just, I'm gonna just paint a couple of scenarios. So you're, you're talking about patterning something after St. John's greenhouse, um, with the, uh, community common areas and then, you know, separate private bedrooms and, um, and the nice thing about that is that, that doesn't constitute dwelling units. Okay? Um, but if you're talking about, you know, going back to maybe the two-building concept and one might be, um, independent senior living, um, with maybe some management and some services by, you know, an operator. And then the other building, um, and, and this is actually very common, um, in Western New York where, um, there's a lot of developments where people are in a building, the one side of the building is independent senior living, and then when they're no longer capable of self-preservation, they go to the other side. There are also developments in the Western New York area that have, uh, different buildings on the complex. So St. John's is a perfect example of that. So when you're lo, no longer capable of self-preservation, you can put in an application to get them to bed in say, an enriched senior living facility. And when you're no longer capable of living in that kind of an environment, then you can go to the full nursing care facility. Um, but I think it's important on, on a number of levels. Um, Doug, Doug talked about, you know, garages and, and community vans that, you know, cart the residents around and, and some of those things. And all of those things change the dynamics. They change, you know, how, how it's going to look. They, it changes the feel of the, you know, are, are there going to be garages? Are they large garages to accommodate vans? Um, are, are you going to accommodate, you know, I see here you have some parking spaces, is that, you know, generally maybe figuring a couple people will still, uh, you know, be, be driving and, and owning vehicles and the rest of it is visitors and, you know, employees, you know, all of these things are really, um, they really feed into the town's factors for consideration. And it almost seems like, um, you, you're asking the board for some, some guidance, which is of course always appropriate to do. Um, but, you know, the board can't guide you as to whether or not those, most, most of the time people come to us and they've, they've either partnered with somebody or they've done their own demographic study, you know, what, what's really needed in the community. Are, is that, is that two-level of care approach, you know, a, a really good approach? Is that, is that really valuable to this community? In which case, you know, then you go back to the two-building concept or, um, you know, maybe you put a firewall in and you got one side and another side and, um, you know, I, you don't really have, um, sixteen thousand square feet if you had to cut that in half, that's not a lot of room. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I think you, I think you, you get what I'm trying to say here. Um, I think maybe, maybe before you come back to the board, maybe it's, it's appropriate to either conduct your own demographic study, hire a consultant, or align with, you know, one of the caregivers in the community and see, see what they think is needed. So when you come back before this board, um, we have something that, that can get legs and, and grow and, and, you know, we can, we can help you get to, um, you know, the end game, as it were. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, uh, understood. And, and this is new to me too. I have experience building what I build. This is brand new, so I'm, I'm on a learning curve. We, we absolutely can do that and come back with something a little, a little more concrete that you guys can actually see. Happy to do it.
And to, I guess, go back to what, uh, Mr. Roy had said earlier about density and lot numbers and, and to me, he raised a good point and I'm, as I'm thinking through all of this and how things would happen. You know, we don't, certainly as a town and probably as a nation, tell you that you can only have, you know, one child or something living in your house. You could buy a house and have fifteen, fifteen kids and they could all live in that house. And that's considered one lot, not fifteen different lots. A group home, basically the same kind of thing. Uh, and we have group homes scattered all over the town and most people don't even know they're right there. Um, and they serve a very strong need in our community. So this is gonna require a lot of thought and planning and, and creativity.
Understood. And we're willing to do that, to come up with the best thing we can do.
If it's a, if I may.
Yes.
Just dovetail off of what you just said. So it seems like you could create something that might be a single-family use as a, with the definition of family-like group home situation, or a conditionally permitted use, so. And what path you go down has its own consideration that needs to be fleshed out, I think, a little bit more.
Right. As, as is, it's, it's a, uh, the twenty-third lot of a twenty-three lot subdivision. Which is, per the R-120 zoning, so.
Right.
Yeah, and now we're just looking for a use on that other, other lot. What Rudy, Rudy's looking at.
Correct. You need to be like the better.
Speak into Kelly. Lean over toward Kelly.
Um, yeah, so one of the considerations is something like a greenhouse would be a single-family residential use under the R-120 zoning district, whereas something like a nursing home, uh, you know, or an independent living would be treated more as a proprietary healthcare facility, which is a conditionally permitted use, which means it's, there, it's still allowable with condition, with additional restrictions or guidelines placed upon it within.
Understood.
So knowing what you're proposing helps, uh, know where that.
Understood, understood.
Any other comments from the board right now? Okay, like to open it up for, uh, the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to speak about this, uh, sketch concept plan. Um, go ahead and raise.
Yes, ma'am.
Come on up. At this point, I know you know the drill, name, address, all that.
My name is Lenoro Sullivan and I live at nine forty-eight Plank Road. But it's just a question, basically. I thought when you were talking about the home originally, the, uh, townhouses, that there was gonna be another facility for them to be able to go and play games and do other things.
Like a clubhouse or something?
Yeah, exactly. And I thought that was what this was gonna be, so I'm kinda putting the two things together, which I don't understand. And how far away from, is that from the firehouse? I can't, I don't know where the firehouse is.
Uh.
The firehouse, did you say?
Yes.
There's the nearest, there's one on Plank Road in West Webster, and then there's the Enderland Station in the Village of Webster.
No.
Well, no, this, there's the firehouse right at the corner of State and Plank.
It's right on the corner of State and Plank. There's a West Webster Fire District.
It's on the corner of State and Plank. But I, I thought that's where this thing.
It's.
Right there.
Not super far, so if you see the aerial view here in the lower left corner is the firehouse.
Okay, and where's this other?
You see where the mouse pointer is?
A little further.
Okay, good.
There you go.
Okay, so.
Oh, it's not anywhere near. I, I just was curious, cause I couldn't picture it in my head. Thank you. That, that's why I thought you were gonna use that other area for, was a clubhouse kind of thing. That's all I.
Apparently none proposed at the moment. Any other questions, comments? Yes?
Molly Novick, nine three thirty-three State Road. This is the one that's closest to me, uh, and I'll guess I had hoped or thought that when this property on, uh, was developed at some point in my tenure there, that it would be single-family homes like what is there now. So, uh, if you put, and there would be room for maybe three half-acre homes on that between me and the homes on Schuhr Craft. Uh, if you put three regular homes there, single-family homes, would that, could that be done and take away some of the townhouses in the middle and still come up with a great number of units that, that he's allowed? Is that an option?
That is, since the, the conventional density calculations allow for twenty-three lots.
Right.
If there was three homes there, there would be two less townhomes.
Is that, is that an option?
Uh, sure.
And, uh, well, even, uh, if he goes to the three-unit, uh, buildings or something that he's talking about for the, uh, the different levels of care as far as the group home is concerned, that would at least make the neighborhood look more like it looks now. House, house, house.
Mm-hmm.
That would, I would be more comfortable with that next door to me. Or if you're gonna go within something like this, I guess I would have thought that the layout would be more uh, parallel to the road rather than just, uh, from, from the road.
More perpendicular.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are, that would be my thinking on, on this.
Okay.
I would like to see it more, keeping the character of the neighborhood, which is being threatened here.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Like to comment on this sketch plan? No comments? Okay, let's see if there's, uh, no calls? Brian, nothing coming in, right? Okay, any other comments from the board? Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, thank you everyone for coming.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, board, very much for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Have a great, uh, Thanksgiving. You know, it's too soon to say that.
I don't know, my neighbor's put up his slides already. Yes, there was a conventional plan. We had a sketch hearing back in January.
It's not in the file.
Uh, I'll.
Curious to see how many lots.
Okay, I thought I put it in, I may have put it in the wrong one then. It may be under the subdivision file on the Google Drive, cause I think I copied over the sketch plan. It was from back in January where you did a conventional.
Okay. Let's get some notes down for, uh, first application. For enabling resolution. Yeah, I think buffering is an important component of this. You know, the, uh, the last comment about putting three homes up there and reducing two townhomes is not a crazy idea. That should at least be addressed as a, a question. This mailbox locations, where those are going.
Sorry. Uh, so he, during the sketch plan, as long as I think that his proposal was to do bank and mailboxes within the, the road. So down, further down the road, you'd have a bank of mailboxes similar to Barclay.
Yeah, so.
So within the.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have twenty-three or a bank right out on the road.
Yeah, but I just wanna know where they.
Yeah.
That, that's something that. Maybe it's in the plans here.
And you get, so town staff is comfortable, like you made a determination that it fits twenty-three lots that are developable in this.
Yeah, that's something that we need to, uh, just also determine. I'm trying to remember, we determined that, uh, the sketch plan, uh,
I couldn't find.
With a conventional plan.
Yes, so back in January of twenty twenty-three, Rudy came in with a sketch plan for the overall sort of layout of the development. He proposed a twenty-three lot subdivision. Um, at that point, he really didn't have a plan for the twenty-third lot. He showed a conventional and a, a cluster development. Um, one of the comments that came out of that sketch plan, because Rudy did ballpark some ideas during the sketch plan of things that were, um, what I'd say is non-traditional residential uses, um, was having him come back and do a sketch for that, that as far as Seeker is concerned, we could review the whole subdivision as well as whatever was going on that twenty-third lot as a single, uh, a single review. So all that to say, back in January, we did do, we did look at a, a, a conventional and a cluster plan. He did show twenty-three lots that appeared buildable as design. I think, uh, this, Matt brought it up.
This is an example of one of the applications that it might have been helpful for us. Might have been helpful for us to, um, explain to the audience again, um, that the developer is entitled to, well, not just the twenty-three, um, but to design the subdivision, um, either conventional or cluster, um, with a certain number of lots and that, and, and explain to the community again the concept of permitted as of right uses, uses and conditionally permitted uses. Um, you know, I, it, I'm always, I guess, a little surprised that the people that that take the time to research the applications and, and they come in and, and they, they seem to be very informed about, you know, what it is that they wanna convey to this board, but perhaps less informed about the rights of the developers and how the town can't, can't tell them, you know, well, you, the, the, the face of the building needs to be parallel to the road and those, just those kinds of things that I think it would be helpful for, for the, uh, the public to understand. So, um, buffering, uh, was a common theme with all the public comments that we got. Uh, density was a common theme, but, um, as you pointed out, um, the, the establishment of the twenty-three lots is, is, uh, in keeping with code. The, uh, the snow storage was a good one. Um, this, this woman who lives across from the entrance, um, is perceiving that the private snowplow contractors will just push across the road onto her property. Uh, so I think one of the things that we wanna ask them, Doug, is to provide some snow storage.
Yep.
On the plan.
How it'll be handled.
So, um, he seemed to be very receptive, um, to your, uh, idea. And, and I, I appreciate what Rudy was saying. And, and I, I appreciate what Rudy was saying. Um, there's, there's a number of, uh, older townhome projects in the town where you can get maybe a car and a half in the driveway. Um, so, you know, there's a, there's maybe a, maybe the nice balance between, you know, pushing the house back there, pushing the road back there.
Yeah.
All, or all for the benefit of maintaining or improving buffering.
Yes, and so part of that for me was, you know, that 45 feet doesn't include the right-of-way, correct? And there's driveway across the right-of-way.
Yeah.
So now granted, you know, we might say, okay, you shouldn't, you shouldn't park in the right-of-way in the driveway, but realistically, you know, there's, you know, I, I've walked through Arbor Ridge, which is a fairly similar type community, and by and large, the driveways aren't full of vehicles. Now, they're empty nesters. They keep their cars in the garage.
Yeah.
You know, they might have visitors over for dinner and that sort of thing. And, um, this is not going to have a garage. The, each of these units, each of these units.
All these are the townhomes.
Yeah. Yeah.
The greenhouse that is shown does include garages on either end because they essentially took the ones that were Arbor Ridge that are sort of at an angle like this, and they just squished it back to back. And, and that's how they presented it on the plan. They just took the few footprints and pushed together.
Okay, so, um, you're, you're saying, I mean, I think we're saying the same thing on the setback.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I guess my comment was that Rudy seemed, uh, very receptive.
Yeah.
Uh, to that, and, uh, and I'm sure Mike's going to come back with, with some provision that can show how, you know, they took the boards and the public comments to heart.
Right.
And they're improving the buffering there.
Right.
I mean, a lot of this, the telltale sign is going to be the survey.
Right, right.
You know, because when they identify, you know, if, if, if you believe what this gentleman who wrote this report said, um, you know, he doesn't think there's, there's many redeeming qualities to the woodlot. Um, but I'm sure there are. And, you know, when you talk about.
Well, in the average Joe, I mean, like me, you know, you go through, oh, these are great woods.
So, but, but everybody has commented about how you, they get full foliage out of these trees that, you know, in the summertime, they can't see through the tree. So if it's really a bunch of dead ash trees, um, they don't really produce a ton of leaves, dead and dying ash trees.
Right.
So we'll have to see what.
Pretty dense over there, though. I've been driving right here all the time. You can't see nothing right now, but it's going to be gone. I mean, you know that. I mean, you know, it's clear over there right now as they're working here. I could get into it. I wasn't walking, but it's, it's, it's dense now, and that will no longer do.
Do you think there'd be any value having our landscape consultant look at that, you know, from?
Do we have a landscape consultant on this?
As far as the validity of, you know, what's dying, dead.
Bruce would be the right person to.
Yeah, I don't know.
To look at a, at a, uh, tree, you know? Um, if, if after getting it, you think that, you know, we could use some guidance from, you know, certified nursery men or Arborist.
I think the guy that did the walk in the study was a retired state.
State worker.
Eggs and markets. Yeah.
But.
So, um, if we want an official, official tree study, and then we need to determine what, to what extent, right?
I think our design standards require certain caliber trees and location and everything. So I don't think it matters if they're dying or alive. It's what's on the property. And I think it's like six inches in diameter and larger need to be surveyed and located so you can see where on the map what is good, what is bad, so.
Okay.
Yeah, start with that.
So we're going to ask them to do that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Needing a tabling resolution?
Um, so in the letter that went out in January, um, uh, we said the applicant should provide basic AMPM peak trip generations. So that's still hanging there.
Mm-hmm. Any thoughts to the one lady's suggestion of moving the intersection?
Just going to say that. Is that the old, that, that's the old plan to the right?
That's the conventional. So that one showed a three-road between State Road and Shu Craft. Um, so as, you know, Mike said in his response, and the lady called out, um, if they go onto Plank Road, uh, they're at the Mercy County DOT. Um, that is a narrow, low area coming out over there, um, on to Plank just behind the, uh, firehouse. It's not really a, a great location. It would be an awkward drive in. You come in, you come at an angle parallel to the road and come over. There's sort of a couple of locations there on State Road. Uh, again, that is also a county road. Both of those have a higher speed limit than Shu Craft. Shu Craft is 35. State and Plank at those locations are both 40. Plank does go down to 35 once you're on the other side of Five Mile Light Road. Um, coming out next to Pauline Novak, the difficulty would be coming out at, uh, 90-degree angle or coming in perpendicularly. You'd have to bring the road up and jog it over, use up a bit of land.
So I don't know if you noticed, but, um, when the, when the audience was leaving, Rudy had already confronted Elaine. So, uh, and he talked with us about that last night. He was going to try to get together with her and the next-door neighbor.
Yeah.
To talk about ways that he could mitigate.
Yeah, and he said that during his presentation that he would propose to do a small burn or something like that, that vegetated right across from where it comes out so that he's not thinking of light coming out, uh, from there.
Okay.
It's really, well, secret.
Mm-hmm. Yes, mitigation for traffic impact. I mean, we can't force it if she doesn't want him doing anything on her property. If there's anything that we can do to say, you have to install things on her property. So.
Any other items we need to?
Hey, Jim, just sorry to interrupt. But in their engineer's report, they did provide the IT trip generation for AM and PM, and it's like 13 trips for 22 units for the AM, and then it's 16 for the PM.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I know you guys don't necessarily get that, but.
Yeah, so.
Thought we did review it and get it, so.
Yeah, so can you, can you break that out and send that to the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay.
I've got.
I think a motion to, uh, do a tabling resolution with issues and points we discussed.
One second.
Yeah, don't, you know, jump in on that.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Burton?
Burton, aye.
Anour?
Anour, aye.
Hiding.
Hiding, aye.
You know, I'll be able to go back and re-review this, but I just want to clarify, so, um, buffering, providing a free survey, do we want to provide a minimum basis, something like an eight-inch caliber?
Well, uh, Juan, you, you had to step out quick. There's a design guidelines, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's six inches in larger.
The EPAD report.
At the DBH, yep, the EPAD report.
Actually, he's got, got to cover all the PRC comments from last week.
Um, investigating alternative layouts, including a single-family mix, sort of as Pauline, uh, had, uh, requested. Um, house north note, storage will be handled, and, um, showing snow storage locations on the site plan. Uh, and I just scrapped out AMPM trip generation because we have that. We'll pull it out.
Mailbox location.
Mailbox location.
And, uh, setback. You know.
Yeah.
Modified road configuration with this, uh, or setback, what potentially were to help increase buffering.
Okay.
And maintain buffering. All right, I think we're ready to vote on.
On the sketch?
I don't think we voted on the tabling resolution.
He just did, wasn't it? Anour, Aiken.
We still have.
Been a long day.
Hello.
Been a long day for him to go.
It was a vote for real. Yeah.
No, they were.
I tried, I tried to butt in and, and Rob had already, uh, made a motion.
All right, enough. Let's keep moving forward then, sketch plan. Um, you know, I, I, both of these types of developments, uh, you know, I know numerous people who had wanted to essentially downsize out of their larger home parcel and stay in Penfield, and people have struggled to find that type of house. Uh, the sketch plan moves it beyond that to, you know, additional senior options. And we have 80 million baby boomers that are approaching the age that these types of things are required. So, uh, I'm not opposed to having, uh, a facility up here. It, we, we need to, I think, need to be careful about what's appropriate and acceptable. You know, is it looked at as a group home? Is it, how is it categorized and so forth?
He's going to have to tell us what, what he thinks is viable. So I, you know, I don't, I don't think he does that without partnering.
A provider, operator.
Yep, so, um, you know, at the, at this point, you know, he's, he, he came to us with a, I don't know what I want to do. Then he came to us with a, uh, a complex, two buildings and a little outbuilding. Uh, and now we've got this building. Um, I don't think we can do really anything until he comes back with a, with a firm plan.
Right.
Um, and like Doug said, uh, you know, there are, there are plenty of definitions that, uh, that are reliable in terms of whether it's a dwelling unit or whether it's institutional activity, residential activity. Uh, but certainly if it ends up being conditionally permitted use, then that takes us in a, in a direct condition. We have to follow that, so.
Right.
You know, I, I think this is a pretty simple sketch letter. Um, if they need to, to firm up plans, uh, that the board can connect that.
Right. Okay.
Make the motion table.
Well, or get a sketch.
Sketch, sketch letter, you know, get back with what they, after they confer with, uh, whoever they're going to confer with, I guess, what they're going to come up with.
Yeah.
You know? You know, try to tell them, but keep in mind that, you know, size is, is.
Are you comfortable with the size at something like 16,000 square feet?
Well, I, I told them to keep in mind that, I don't know. It's, you know, he said it's acceptable, right? I mean, I thought it was kind of big, that parcel itself, but.
So the equivalent of St. John's is 20 units or 20 beds. Because that's the combination of essentially the two.
Two.
That they have down there. Each one of those is 10 units, yeah, or is 10 beds.
But that does, on their website, they say they're skilled nursing care, which suggests that it's some type of skilled nursing facility, which would mean that there's not enough parking there for staff.
And that's, and that's licensed care. That's a, that's a whole different thing. So let's, listen, we, yeah, we'll have to wait and see what he comes back with and we'll react to it from there.
Okay, so we have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Burton?
Burton, aye.
Anour?
Anour, aye.
Hiding.
Hiding, aye.
Okay. Anything else?
Go ahead. Oh, one item of note, and we wanted to provide it to you. It's up to you guys, but there, it would be something you'd want to vote on or if it's more informational. But back in August, we reviewed 1704 Penn Field Road. Uh, it was the Falvo, not Falvo, Jennings Nurse Funeral Home. Um, one of the requirements of the approval resolution was for them to provide architectural renderings with material fallout for the board to confirm, since they had ideas and they explained what they were doing, but they didn't have any visual representation of it. Uh, they have provided that. Uh, we provided a copy, uh, in your packet.
It was on the bottom of the.
Yes, I saw that, but it, it, unless the coloring was kind of funny, the way it printed, he, he described, uh, the materials and the color of the materials, but it was very hard to distinguish those colors.
Agreed. We do have, we do have a file that Matt can bring up of the blue that Doug found.
Yeah.
I, I, I think the picture that they gave us, because it looks the same on the screen.
Yeah, it's, it looks a little dark. It looks a little black instead of blue.
Yeah.
Very hard to tell the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's closer to an AB-ish color.
But.
Okay.
If you guys are comfortable with it, I don't think it necessitates the vote. Just that they're all approved.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think I'm all right. Do you have any objections?
Okay, it was more of an informational item, but we wanted to provide it to the board.
Okay.
Doug, do you like the color, Doug?
Yeah. My old house was that color. I kind of like that color.
Like.
I could paint vinyl.
You influenced it, you go.
All right. There being no further business before us, we will adjourn. Have a great night. See you next month.
What do we pick for our turkeys?